I think we can call the order and play a roll call. Bridget, are you doing that?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
I can. Lovely. Go ahead.
Councilmember Atlas Ingberstun.
Here.
Barbara.
Here.
Shambles. Shambles. Cummings.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Fredston.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Johnson. Johnson. Lee.
Here.
Lilligrin.
Here.
Lindstrom.
Here.
Lucy.
Here.
Turner. Turner. Vento.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Zarin. Zarin. Chair Zali.
I'm here, and I noticed in the chat that councilmember Shambles is here, but maybe having some sound issues.
Okay.
Well, welcome, everybody, and the agenda is before us. We don't need a motion unless there is a, any dissent, we will proceed with the agenda as posted. We will consider approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes? From December 2nd, I should say.
Full move's approval.
Second by Gonzalez.
Oh, thank you. Lovely. Any corrections? Not? Bridget, you can call it all.
All right. Councilmember Atlas Ingberstun.
Aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Shambles.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Fredston.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Johnson. Johnson. Lee.
Aye.
Lilligrin.
Aye.
Lindstrom.
Aye.
Lucy.
Aye.
Turner. Turner. Vento.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Zarin. Zarin. Chair Zali.
Aye. All right, the minutes are approved. So, we really have one main event today, and that's to kind of start our 2050 regional planning discussion. I had the honor to represent Met Council this morning at a House Local Government Committee in doing an overview of what Met Council does. And every time we talk about Met Council, I actually learn something, you know, but it is pretty comprehensive, as we all know. But there's a great slide that shows the planning process over a 10-year period. And it's really interesting, and I described today as like with inauguration, kind of a new start with a new administration. But we're at an interesting point in our planning process and the important work we do as a regional government, because planning is really central to what we do and providing these series of plans, including the larger kind of Thrive Plan. And, you know, just as we are getting the completion, that whole run of December 23 comprehensive plans that we are approving, we're kind of, you know, the culmination of 10 years' work. And yet, we're also now at the very beginning of this next 10 years. And so, it's kind of an exciting moment where we're kind of where they overlap as we're finishing and still live with a lot of those side principles. But now, it's an open canvas and an opportunity for us to think more broadly about those visions and that work that really has been done by previous councils and ones we agree with. But it's still an exciting moment. So, here we are at the cusp, and we have great facilitators, thought leaders in the staff, Michelle Fury and Sarah Maskey, who is hiding behind her whiteboard, next to her whiteboard. And you've also kind of picked our brains and kudos to those who have already been to the Mentimeter and shared some thoughts. We're going to be able to kind of hear from everybody. But I am thrilled that, Michelle, Sarah, we have you, so take it away.
Great, Mr. Chair, thank you. This is Michelle Fury. Can you all hear me before I get going too much? Great. Awesome. Thank you. So, we are really excited to be here today to begin this conversation with you. And, you know, our primary goal today, as we mentioned in some of the pre-materials, is really to hear from you and to get some of your ideas to start to guide this discussion. So, I'm Michelle Fury. Most of you know me. I am the manager in the Communications Department, and one of the things that I oversee is public involvement. So, I've been working with one of the internal teams that has already begun discussing some of the work that we need to do regarding the 2050 Regional Plan and taking a look backwards really at the process that we underwent during the 2040 creation, plan creation. So, we're going to be talking a little bit about just some of the high-level overviews of those processes and really spending a majority of our time today talking with you and listening to you about some of your ideas. I'm going to let Sarah introduce herself, and then we'll jump into some of the background before we get started.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Great. I'm a little far away from my computer, so if I don't see something, that's why Michelle is there to help me with that. I'm Sarah Maskey. I am the Senior Communications Specialist at the Met Council. I primarily support transportation services, but I'm extremely excited to be able to be involved in this 2050 planning process and in shaping the engagement as we go forward. And I love that this is our first stop, so I'm looking forward to hearing all of your thoughts and ideas tonight and going into the future. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to Michelle, and I'll pop out of the picture.
Thank you, Sarah. Greg, did you want to share the slides that we have for tonight? And you can move to the next slide when you're ready. So, just wanted to give you a snapshot of how we'll be spending our time tonight. We're going to give a really high-level overview of the regional planning process, as I mentioned. And we really want to engage your best thinking about our regional policies and plans and listen to, you know, where our policies may be meeting your expectations, areas that we might need to reconsider, and, you know, opportunities to reflect either more recent innovation, which is certainly relevant as we've learned a lot about the pandemic that we're undergoing, and to think through maybe approaches that you'd like to see us use or that could be potentially different from what we've done in the past. Since our primary goal is to hear from you, we'll maybe taking a few minutes to set up the conversation. So, we'll talk a little bit about regional planning. We'll have an activity that will build upon the poll that many of you already filled out. And then, we'll spend a lot of time on discussion and really just, you know, dig into some of those topics. My goal and Sarah's goal and our roles tonight are really to facilitate this conversation. We are not planners or experts in any particular process related to planning or any technical field, but we're just here to make sure that the communication, or that, I'm sorry, that the conversation flows and that we're capturing what you're saying and that we're making sure that, you know, all of you get an opportunity to say the things that are on your minds tonight. We do have a few experts here to help, of course, as usual. So, if there is something that we can't answer, we will definitely be able to draw upon their knowledge and expertise. And then, before we leave tonight, we'll obviously have a little bit of information about what you can expect moving forward in this process. Next slide, please. So, let's begin with a few clear outcomes for tonight's discussion. One thing we want to make sure you walk away with is a high-level understanding of the timeline and the process for developing the regional plan for 2050. We really want to listen to you as councilmembers and hear your expectations and interests for this process. We want to make sure that we provide time for discussion about your goals in the policymaking process. And, you know, it's one of the things that we talk about a lot here at the council, that the council members make policy. Well, this is the big one, right? So, this is a really good opportunity to hear from you about what you would really like to see in this process. And then, we'd like to plan at least at a beginning level for future conversations and how you all might be involved in guiding this process as we move forward. Next slide, please. In these next couple of slides, I'm going to give you a brief overview of the planning process. And, you know, if there are any areas that you'd like to dig in a little deeper that we won't necessarily take the time to cover tonight, we can certainly come back or we can, you know, answer a handful of questions as we go. But just keep in mind that this is intended to just lay us a basic foundation for you. So, our regional plan, which is currently called Thrive MSP 2040, is established in states that statute as our, one of our primary responsibilities as the Metropolitan Council. It provides pretty important fundamental guidance around land use policy, transportation systems, wastewater systems, and then it also takes into account the census data and population estimates. From that work, which is referred to in statute in a number of ways, called the, it's called the Comprehensive Development Guide. It's called the Metropolitan Development Guide or just the Development Guide, which is why we always pick a name that we refer to it as, so that's very clear which plan we mean. There are a handful of related plans that grow out of that long-term regional plan. The Regional Parks Policy Plan, which you all just recently approved an update to. The Transportation Policy Plan, which also includes an Aviation System Plan. Several years ago, those two were combined into one, so that they, since they have such a strong relationship with each other, and it's all part of the broader transportation system in the region. We have the Water Resources Policy Plan, which guides some of our wastewater policies, finance-related things, and some other environmental concerns that relate to the wastewater treatment system and its capacity. And then, there are a couple of other plans that grow out of those as well. In the last cycle, we did the region's first housing policy plan in 30 years. And that's not a system plan, but it is a policy plan, and it does have policy guidance in it. And it was really a big undertaking to just create this thing from scratch, because what, one of the things that's really important about our regional planning process is that it builds upon previous plans. So, it's taking existing policy and either adding to it or, you know, making sure that there's clarity to it and things like that. So, the Housing Policy Plan was a, was a really new piece of this, and it was something that the previous council took a leadership role on, and it will be also something that you will be looking into, no doubt, here in the coming years. And then, the additional thing is the Water Supply Plan, which is really more of an analysis of future sort of conditions and some of the impacts of development on our water supplies within the region. To just give local communities an opportunity to have a sense of how that precious resource is being used. So, the last plan, the 2040 Plan, had five regional outcomes that are hopefully starting to become familiar to you as councilmembers: stewardship, prosperity, equity, livability, and sustainability. And the policy framework was really embedded underneath those outcomes. And then, there were also three implementation principles included in the regional plan that were intended to guide how the council does its work, and those were integration, collaboration, and accountability. And I'll talk a little bit about those, those last three in a bit. But the reason that those were important was because we did hear a lot from the communities that we work with and the organizations that we partner with about how the council does its work and how it could be, how it could improve upon that work with this new regional plan. So, ultimately, this really, this plan and these systems plans that go along with it identify the regional vision for investment and development. It's a regional document, so that's one thing that you might hear staff say. It's that, you know, it's not necessarily the council's Thrive MSP 2040 Plan. It's the regional Thrive MSP 2040 Plan. It is the council's responsibility for creating it and maintaining the policies embedded in it. But it is a regional plan, so it's intended to not just be something that the council uses and the council supports. Just to kind of give you a sense of who uses these plans, they are fundamental to the comprehensive planning process that local governments undertake, which, of course, we just about have finished as, at the end of last year. And system policy guidance that's important for things like state transportation plans and related, related aspects of, in some cases, the water policies that are identified in the, in the policy plans are also part of the things that, like the DNR and the Department of Health and the Board of Water and Soil Resources are also involved with. So, there's collaboration elements in each of these plans as well. But the other thing that is pretty critical about these, these policy plans and the overall regional plan is compliance with state and federal law. We are required to have them, so it is really important that we do, and we are evaluated and in some cases, you know, more periodically reviewed based on what those policy plans say that we're going to do. So, just a little bit of trivia for you. We have 188 local governments in the region that do comprehensive planning. We have a bunch of partner agencies, and we're all, we're involved in coordinating with all of them as we go to make sure that these policies and, and plans all work together to make sure that we're achieving the goals that each of us is accountable for. Next slide, please. So, I don't know if this is the cool graphic that Chair Zali was talking about, but this is a cool graphic that we use to describe the planning timeline. So, I'm first going to talk a little bit about how it went in the 2040 cycle. So, as you can see here, the Thrive MSP 2040 was adopted in 2014 by the Metropolitan Council. And out of that came several of the systems plans and policy plans and, you know, subsequent updates to those plans, as is required by law periodically. And that happened initially in 2014 and 2015, following the regional plan creation, and then there have been updates since. The other piece that comes out of those policy plan conversations following the regional plan adoption is something called a system statement, which provides a pretty detailed summary of all of the requirements that local governments need to plan against when they do their comprehensive plans. They're pretty impressive. If you haven't ever taken a look, taken a look at one, you learn a lot about a community by looking at their system statement. It is, it is a technical document, but it is also comprehensive, and it's quite an undertaking that our staff coordinate following the regional plan creation. So, then, those system statements are delivered to local governments, and out of those come the local comprehensive plans that are required every 10 years. And that's basically how it works. It has been a fairly linear process in the past, where we have the regional plan, the systems plans, the system statements, and then the local comprehensive plans. And there's a careful balance that has to be struck in the, in any updates that come out of the policy and systems plans, because you don't want to shift regional policy so significantly during those updates that you actually change the process for a local comprehensive plan that might already be underway. So, that's one of the considerations that does actually sort of make the whole regional planning and immediate systems planning process pretty, pretty important as you go forward. And of course, during the last regional plan, just to kind of give you a sense of how councilmembers were involved with that, there was a subcommittee of councilmembers that guided that work. So, they met pretty regularly. They addressed a number of the policy considerations. They were pretty fundamental folks who helped create the framework for the five outcomes and the three principles for our work. So, those councilmembers were really the ones that knew inside and out the plan details and the plan information. Next slide, please. So, you'll notice something a little different about this slide, and we wanted to give you a sense of some of the lessons learned from the 2040 process by indicating it on, on this graphic. One of the pieces that we heard during the last regional planning process was better connection and integration between the systems planning and policy planning process and the overall regional plan. They don't need to be separate things. They really work together. The policy plans tend to have more detail about the, the system-specific policy information that comes out of the vision that the regional plan provides. So, they should be created in tandem with each other. And one of the things that has already been happening is a, you know, much better integration between those plans. So, tentatively, that process would, would come to you for approval, which is, of course, that what we're ready for today in approximately 2024. Following that would be the system statements process approximately the next year after that, and then, providing those system statements to local governments so they could do their comprehensive planning updates beginning in 2024. So, that's just a general idea of how the timeline tends to flow. And of course, we're beginning our discussions now three years in advance of, of that process, three plus years in advance of that process, in fact. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, one of the lessons we learned from the previous process was that we really need to make sure that we're optimizing our opportunities to bring our policy direction together and have it flow more consistently between the regional plan and the policy plan. And then, in that process of creating the plan, you know, making sure that all the different planning areas, that there's, there's an expectation and an understanding that the work that's being done in the policy plans has a direct relationship to the regional plan and vice versa. The other thing that, just so that you know, following the 2040 Plan, there was a staff group that was established to really dig deeply into the process, both from an external perspective and from an internal perspective, to hear what went well and where we may be missed opportunities. And so, one, one of those, I, I think it's a bit of an innovation, is to, is to have all of the planning teams throughout the council at the same table talking about how we organize some of the policy considerations that may be in this regional plan. That's a huge, it's a huge change. It probably doesn't feel like it to you, because it seems pretty intuitive. But when you think about the subject matter expertise that we have at the council, you know, people tend to sort of, you know, develop those expertise in those, in those policy areas, and they don't necessarily talk to the folks who are doing a different part of that work. And what this, what this process has already done is changed that completely. There, there's a lot more small groups that are working together on studies, so that there's, where there's overlap between systems, it is, it's really coming through in the work. I mean, I don't need to tell you this, but just anecdotally, you know, when we go out and do engagement on any issue that the council may be taking on, we always hear feedback about something else, whether it's a council responsibility or not, doesn't matter. They see us as government, and they think we should be able to bring the news or the information back to the organization to really, you know, talk through some of these things. So, the same is true for our systems and policy plans as it relates to the regional plan. People hear all the time about places where we overlap. And those overlaps really need to be reflected in the planning process, and that's one of the things that our, our leadership team has committed to bringing to this process this time. And it's, it's been pretty exciting to participate in that, to be honest. So, that's one of the innovations that you'll hear about a little bit as we move forward, but we wanted to make sure you have a little background about that, too. Okay, Greg, next slide. All right, so, we're to the place now where I'm going to stop talking, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to ask any, any quick questions, if you have any, and then just give you kind of a sense of what we'll do. We're just going to spend a little time delving a little more deeply into those questions that we sent to you ahead of time, and we'll, we'll put them up on the screen for you, of course, and then Sarah will be taking notes. But if you have not filled out the Mentimeter poll and you would like to, you still can. We're going to be sharing the results with you live as we go tonight. So, it's fine for you to go ahead and, and keep doing that, and it'll, it'll appear on the screen for you. So, you know, I just really want to encourage you to do that. And then, just as a reminder, you know, tonight is really about giving you a space to be creative, to think big picture, to foster any kind of, you know, breakthrough thinking or, you know, innovation that you're thinking about in your mind, to be uncomfortable, if you'd like, and to pose uncomfortable questions. Sometimes, it's hard to do that, but this is really where we're going to start doing some of that work. And, you know, really, think big. Create some vivid image of possi, vivid images of possibility in what this regional plan can look like. So, that's really our goal, to try and, you know, get you thinking big picture about some of those things. I'm going to, I'm going to stop for a second and see if there are any questions. And councilmember Sterners asked for the poll in the chat. I will look that link for you and see if anybody has any questions.
I'm going to, and by the way, Michelle, you know, if this is less formal than a council meeting, you can ask if people feel comfortable. I'm happy to help facilitate, but you can also be the facilitator and respond directly. I know Councilmember Vento has a question. I'm just going to ask a quick question, then, then, then Councilmember Vento. On the planning process in this engagement cycle, we're there in the past, and do we have now any, you know, how do we use committees, advisory committees, maybe existing or otherwise, to help kind of give that input in the, in the, in the reaction? That kind of, I know pla, planning is a collaborative iterative process, so is that something that would start and has started, will start?
Mr. Chair, that's a, that's a great question and a really good point. Our advisory committee, committees are essential partners in our policymaking process. So, most of the systems plans that you see all start or originate at some point in, in one of our advisory committees. So, the, you know, the staff certainly are curating the policies and bringing, you know, forward technical analysis for the advisory committees, but they're absolutely a critical piece of this and will be engaged throughout the whole process. With the regional plan, it's a little, it's not exactly different, but it's unique because it does cross so many different subject areas that we do need to, you know, try to find ways to plug into the work that each of the advisory committees is doing. I think the one that is probably the most prominent in that process is the Land Use Advisory Committee. They're a pretty foundational piece of the regional plan, because that's one of the only, well, it's the, it's the primary place where our land use policy is expressed. So, that's a pretty important point to make, and I appreciate you for raising that.
I remember to unmute. Thank you, Michelle. Sue, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle, I'm curious as to what extent we engage with cities and townships and also the counties in a direct sort of way in terms of having a, a pre-conversation about the planning process and how they can be involved. I, I'm interested in how we can make this less of a talking down to and more of a talking with, and that's not a criticism on the way folks have done it in the past. But there's a tendency, I think, on the part of, of local units of government to think of, of counties, Met Council, legislature, passing on mandates and demands and not feeling as though they've got a say in it. And I'm, I'm curious as to what we've done to give cities and townships a say and what we can do in the future to give them more of a partnership kind of role in creating a process that not only helps us meet our statutory and, and identified goals, but also helps them in their work.
Sure, councilmember. I appreciate the question. Thank you. I, what, the first thing I'll say off the top is our local planning assistance group in community development has pretty deep and ongoing relationships with each of the cities in the region. One of the reasons the sector rep program, which is, is what you call, what we call the local planning assistance staff, one of the reasons that we have that program organized like it is, is to make sure that there are direct relationships with each of those communities. And they're spending a lot of time out in those communities, working with staff and elected officials to really dig into the, you know, impact of not only regional plans, but the local conditions in there, in their communities. Those relationships kind of exist behind the scenes most of the time. So, you know, a lot of times, we don't know the, the extent of the work that they're doing, but I, I can tell you that the volume is incredible, and the knowledge that each of those staff have about the communities that they represent is pretty deep and amazing. And they, and they bring that to bear on this process. I know that the group is, is planning to do some more specific outreach related to the comprehensive planning process that will really be fundamental to this long-range planning process as well. They're going to go out and ask, you know, their colleagues in, in local governments how it went and what they can learn from this process. And that's actually a culture And that's actually a, a culture that our local planning assistance group has had over the last several years is to really engage with the users and the people and the communities impacted by the decisions that the council are ma- is making, to make sure that we're accounting for, you know, what, what expectations they have, what needs they have. So those, those relationships are going on all of the time. We could probably spend a little time, and I think, I think this is probably more, more appropriate to your point, spend some time intentionally planning how each of you as council members could certainly go out and start engaging with the elected officials in each of your communities. And, you know, that is definitely a part of what we would normally plan for you. But each, you know, district being a little bit unique and each community having a little bit, you know, specific needs and sometimes specific policy areas, we can obviously customize those things for you. So we've already been talking a little bit about how that might work, but ultimately that is something that, you know, will come soon as we start to talk to you about how that can, that, that can come together. The other thing that I would say is several of our advisory committees are heavily comprised of members who are elected local officials. So they're already making some of these policy choices and recommendations that are, you know, fundamental to creating these policies as well. So there's a, there's a, a multi-pronged opportunity there from a staff-to-staff level, from a, you know, council member to council member level, and then also on our advisory. So there's lots, there's lots of ways that we can plug into that. Okay. Well, I think I'm gonna move us into the, the facilitator time where Sarah is gonna really be working with you on the questions and hearing from you more specifically about some of the ideas and thoughts that you have. I did share with, with you this afternoon, the responses we had gotten before about 1:00, but there have been some additional ones. So as we transition between, as we transition between the conversations, I'm going to be sharing for a minute the results of the questions. But I think before we get started, we might have a, we might, we have a suggestion for you about how you can see Sarah's whiteboard better. So Greg, this would be the time to change that setting for everybody. And then Sarah is gonna ex-
Like this?
Yeah. And then Sarah is gonna explain to you how you can see her up close.
Actually, I think Greg, this is Sarah. If you would, Michelle, if you want to share the Mentimeter screen first, and then we can have Greg lock me.
Okay, she'll be able to see the first question. What does it look like to be an effective steward of resources? And it is scrolling through the responses. I'll pause that here for a second. You can kind of get a sense of some of the thoughts that folks have. Finite resources, finding a way to maximize them so that we're fully utilizing them, including technologies and other equitable strategies, maintaining upkeep so that we defend, you know, scarce resources and plan for the future. Plans and actions that demonstrate work to end disparities and systemic racism. Directing resources to a shared vision for a more equitable region. Make sure we safeguard what is scarce, maximize our effectiveness. And then I'll let this go again. There we go. Facilitate economic growth. And then I think that about, oh, do the homework to be informed. Choose areas to focus that are more impactful, create outcomes and goals in the plan that, that can meet these things.
All right. Well, Greg, if you could lock me now. And then for the council members, if you go to the upper right of your screen, you see the layout button. If you click on that, there's a dropdown that says focus, and then that will pull me to full screen.
And what I'll do while Sarah is talking is I'll kind of be watching for people to either raise their hands in the participant menu or chat if you want to say something or, you know, otherwise, so that we can make sure that everybody can participate. But I'll be looking for that. And let's go to it.
So we're doing a little combo of high-tech, low-tech, which I really like because I think best at a whiteboard. And so as I'm listening to the discussion, I'm hopefully going to be able to guide it as we move along. I want to thank you for providing feedback ahead of time. That was super helpful. It helped me kind of curate some of the things that we want to draw out a little bit more. And so I wanted to start with the first question, which Michelle just put up there. Michelle, can you mute?
Yep, sorry. Councilmember, Councilmember Lilligran and Councilmember Atlas Sango-Bretson both have their hands for you. So why don't we start with Councilmember Lilligran and then we'll move to you, Councilmember Atlas Sango-Bretson.
Yeah, sorry. This is Councilmember Lilligran. I didn't mean to raise my hand. My apologies.
But never mind.
I think that might have been from my last meeting, actually.
I will just really quickly, when I was curating, there was kind of some clear lines that were coming through from the comments from the different council members. And so I did, on this first question, group them. Communication being the first one, being transparent, authentically listening, intentionally inclusive. And we just heard a little bit more from, from Councilmember Vento about talking with local government and not to them. Leadership was another one that came out, servant leadership ends disparities and systemic racism. Planning in general, so choose areas of focus, outcomes, goals, think long-term. And stewardship, which was really talking a lot about the finite resources that we have and how do we maximize that. So with that, I'll go ahead and go to Councilmember Atlas Sango-Bretson.
Thank you. I just, I'm gonna drop something to you guys. I, there is just some really great tools out there for doing whiteboard work online so that people can read things. It's still really hard to read what's on the screen still. And so I just, I'm gonna find some, we use a few things at my organization. I just wanted to share that with you and, and, and see if we can use something like, I think this is really great and a compelling way to track information and to engage. It's still really hard because of the glare to read. I just want to acknowledge that for people who are maybe watching online or, or for other reasons. And so I hope we can lean into these online technologies that we have. So I'll, I'll share that offline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chambliss, oh, sorry, go, go ahead.
I was just gonna say this isn't perfect, but it is, it's something that I've done effectively with other groups. And I do realize it's a little hard to see. However, we will be taking screenshots of the, of the board. So we'll be able to share that afterwards as well. So.
Councilmember Chambles? Yeah, in the chat, Councilmember Chambliss has said add outcomes and accountability to stewardship. Did you want to say anymore about that, Councilmember Chambliss?
Yes, I wanted to add that because I believe where it's really easy to come up with goals and strategies and plans and policies. But in order to continuously improve, we need to follow up and make sure that we're able to measure our success against outcomes so that we have accountability. I mean, some of our goals are such long-term goals that it needs to be really clear so that when we hand it off to other teams or committees or, you know, people who have, weren't there when these goals were originated, can follow up and be accountable to completing them. I think that's really important in turn for reducing disparities. Because if we have to continuously start over, that could be contributing to the reason why we're not being successful in reducing disparities or systemic racism.
Thank you. Don't see any other hands raised. Don't be shy.
Yeah, I have a question to pose, so I'm just gonna kind of go down the road here. So this is kind of addressing the how do, how we communicate and who do we communicate with? What are your thoughts on that in terms of, you know, how do we be more transparent? What are the tools we need to authentically listen and be more intentionally inclusive?
Go ahead, Councilmember Atlas Sango-Bretson.
Thank you. I think one thing we do need to think about in this time of being online has definitely raised both opportunities and limitations to people who have different abilities related to engaging. Most of our engagement around planning is done through reading of text and commenting, a survey or something else. So just being really thoughtful about other ways to provide the information that we are, are getting to folks. And one example, so that, that's one piece. So thinking about people who, for sight is an issue or hearing is an issue and, and thinking about both of those things. And even the design of the information we provide when we do engagement. So, you know, I hope everybody knows, right? The best practice for a slide is no more than four points on the slide and written in a highlighted format. But oftentimes we'll get paragraphs on a slide, for example. And so we have the time and the luxury of having staff walk us through them. But when we think about the public, it can be so much information that it's daunting or it's overwhelming. It's not following the best communication standard practices. So that's one thing. But as it relates to authenticity and intentionality about being inclusive, I'll just give you an example. There are many times where we have had public hearings or plans go out for comment and we get none or three or four kind of responses. Over the holiday, I received 287 notifications of comments on an issue related to a park, a regional park on Nextdoor, the app. And so us really thinking about where are people and can we put information into bite-sized pieces when it comes to planning? So that instead of having to review a 200-page plan and comment, you know, with track changes or however, that we're putting things into the right sizes for people to be able to comment. So instead of maybe looking at the entire plan at one period of time, there, we're looking at sections of it or in an iterative fashion at the development that's in, able to be given in a bite-sized size fashion more effectively via different types of social media or other types of media channels and communication channels.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thoughts on communication?
Can I pipe in? This is Wendy.
Please.
So I'm the only one who was here the last time. And I can give some observations of what, some things that frustrated me last time so that hopefully we can do it better this time. We had a lot of really open-ended meetings on the front end that were just not, not giving any context to what we were asking or anything. It was just flat out, hey, do you like puppies? Well, yeah, of course, everybody likes puppies. And then the stuff went to a back room somewhere and then it came back out at the end of, okay, this is the plan. And people were so burnt out by the open-ended meetings at the beginning with nothing to react to, that by the time you got to the end, they were burnt out. There was not a lot of time to, to actually react to the actual text that was chosen. And I felt like even when we were having our committee of the whole meetings, it, it felt like everything was a secret until we got into the meeting. And then it would be ta-da, give us your reaction. And a lot of people can't instantly come up with a good thought process on reaction. You need the information ahead of time so that you can think about it, talk to other people, digest it, and then give a reasoned response. So I think it's important when we're doing engagement, both internally and externally, that we have information ahead of time to react to rather than just popping things off at the last second and saying, okay, give us your, your gut feeling on this. You'll get better feedback if we have some time to digest. And our, and the people that we're interacting with outside need time to, to look at something, process it and, and digest it rather than always popping things off at the last second to people.
That's a great point. I think that's one of the most important things about communicating is, you know, kind of that, that feedback loop. It's, you know, it starts with giving them a baseline and then hearing from them and then coming back with them and, and talking with them about what their input influenced. And that's something that we really want to make sure happens.
Councilmember Barbara, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I somewhat echo a little bit of what Wendy said. And I think it goes to that engaging with the communities earlier than last time. I was, I was not part of the, the Thrive process, but the rest of the processes down the road. But I remember I was at the Scott County presentation when council came out to present to, to the county about, and it was presenting, no, this is what we're doing versus having those conversations earlier and really actually getting some feedback kind of throughout the process. So sort of to what Wendy's point that you're not getting something sent at the end and having to react just to that, you are, you're feeling like you're part of the process along the way.
Councilmember Vento, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm, maybe this has been covered and I missed it. My brain's not working all that well right now, but I'm curious as to what extent we, we take time to, to, with the, the cities and townships to look back at the, the previous planning, planning and what worked well and what didn't, what we ought to continue, what we ought to change. To what extent that? And can that be a part of, of this process going forward? Is to pause for a moment and take, take a look at the process we've just been through and how that can guide us as we go forward?
Actually, if I could have Lisa Barajas address that, I believe there is a process going on right now.
Unmute myself, too. Hi, I'm Lisa Barajas, Community Development Director. And yes, our staff are working on developing the process and engagement strategy for work, connecting with local government, staff, consultants and other officials who are a part of the planning, the plan review process, I should say. Not the development of Thrive necessarily, but what it was like to deliver the service, were our materials clear and helpful? And a whole variety of very detailed questions from top to bottom of, did the handbook help? Was this section helpful? Were your sector reps helpful? Really all of these details, yes or no, what other comments you want to share with us? So both surveying and reaching out to staff as well. I know that we did hear quite a bit from local governments after the development of Thrive and its policy plans in various ways back in 2014 and 2015. So we won't be asking them those questions about the development of the planning of the regional plans or the system plans because that is, I know, hard for many folks to remember. But also, we also, we did hear from many folks at that time. But we will be engaging with them again. And I think one of the things that I know Michelle and I have talked about too is even asking folks, how do you want to be engaged in this process and what works for you? And doing that directly with our partners in local government that we work with on an everyday basis will go a long ways to us being better partners with them.
Thank you, Lisa.
If I could follow up?
Absolutely.
Sarah Kife, or Lisa, I'd be interested in receiving kind of a compilation of, of the items that they identified in 2015. I don't know if there's a, a report or some sort of a document that would give us as council members a sense of, of what folks said and what the kind of feedback they provided. I think it would be helpful for us going forward.
Councilmember Vento, I don't know if there was a singular formal report, but certainly I think Councilmember Will shared a lot of frustrations that we, that we've heard from local governments as well and Councilmember Barber as, as well. I think those are probably the big themes around that. And, but we can certainly look back at our public comment report because we also received comments within that as well.
A lot of that was one-on-one sharing information with us, especially our sector reps, about how and when and how they think they should be engaged. So we don't have a single formal report, but I will see what we can pull out and summarize for you and share for all the council members.
Councilmember Lindstrom, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. I'm going to tell you something you likely already know. But when I think about this topic, I think about that spectrum of public participation. What is it? The IAP2 spectrum of public participation, something like that, where you are walking into a group and giving clear expectations around this engagement process, like from, hey, we're meeting with you and we're just going to get your ideas and we're going to keep you informed, all the way to you are an advisory group on whatever topic and you are going to be making decisions, you're going to be taking votes on this. Your input is for sure going to be incorporated into the plan and everything in between that. And just, I think it goes to that top bullet of transparency. Being very transparent on the, on the outset, what their role is going to be in this, in this process.
Absolutely. Very familiar with the spectrum of public participation. Thank you.
And just for those of you that didn't see it, Councilmember Atlas and Breton was giving you all kinds of thumbs up and shout-outs for that. Councilmember, I see your hands up again. Would you like to say something else?
I totally paid Councilmember Lindstrom to say that. He executed it perfectly.
Excellent.
And I want to, you know, and I, so I just want to add, I don't know if reactions are appropriate council business, but I couldn't hold myself back. It's the first time, it'll be the last. But thank you, Councilmember Lindstrom, for bringing that up. And, and I want to just encourage us as an organization to lean into that work. It is really powerful. It really will, and it's not just the spectrum, right? Like, so there's a lot that goes behind it. But if we can follow that kind of a practice, I am work up front. And I've met with the communication and engagement team. And we've talked about the utilization of this at length. But I really think it can transform the way that we engage with particularly our elected officials and municipalities. And if we did it correctly for something like this, we would have a engagement level on the spectrum and approach for different groups we were engaging with. So the general public would have one level of engagement. Internally, we would have a level of engagement for our own staff and for the council. And then we would have a level of engagement for municipalities and other key stakeholder groups. So I would really welcome that as an approach. Thanks, Councilmember Lindstrom, for bringing that up.
And not because I'm running out of room under communications, but I'd like to move us along to see if we have any other thoughts on the other areas. The leadership portion of this, just wondering, what does that look like? And to you as council members, and how do we put leadership ahead in this plan? No thoughts on that right now?
Don't see any hands raised or chats, but if you'd like to say something, please just chime in.
Well, I'll speak up. You know, I've been thinking about and talking about, you know, those are good servant leadership. We lead by collaborating and listening. But I also think sometimes when we come forward with a plan, that if we can, I almost think of it as co-leading. We're not the only leaders in the region, but we are an important voice to talk about the aligned interests for a long-term vision. And I think that there's really a choir, including many of our stakeholder organizations. I think of the work we did with setting up a regional economic framework. That was really co-led with the Center for Economic Inclusion, Greater MSB Partnership, others. And, and so I don't, I think there is some humility that we are not the leader, but we are a, we are with others, co-leading in an aligned fashion. I keep using the word alignment because that's, convening is only good if it's convening and aligning how we gather through this engagement process. It kind of a common language and that because in order to achieve goals, we can't, we're not necessarily the implementers, but we help do the research and provide the planning process to kind of garner that, that aspiration and that interest toward these, these are longer-term, really critical, you know, inclusive growth comes with many different efforts. And I think it requires a certain kind of leadership to, to get there.
This is Wendy. I can, I can pipe in too. I, I was waiting to see if anybody else wanted to say anything because I don't want to be, I hate being first. But I, I think it's important to be respectful of the leadership of the counties, the cities, the townships, the tribe, because we're, we're partners with them. And I know last time we had a parade of advocacy groups that came and spoke to the council, one after the other, at the very beginning of the tenure of the Dayton Council, telling us what we needed to do to tell those other elected officials how to think. And we're working with them. We're not doing to them. They're our partner. We don't, we don't have the authority to just order them around and wave a magic wand and make them do what we want. We have to work with them and be respectful of that partnership. Otherwise, we lose our legitimacy and then we end up like we did last time where the five county governments tried to get rid of the Met Council and had a big brouhaha. And I don't, I really don't want to do that again. I'd much rather be collaborative.
Thank you, Wendy, for being more eloquent than what I, what I was kind of getting at, that idea of partnership and respect.
Right. Councilmember Chambliss, did you want to say something?
Well, for leadership, yeah, I, I think it's important to, for a leader to look at how can we maintain our planning, our stewardship, our communication over time, and execute it well. I think that's a responsibility of the leader to make sure that we have the tools and mechanisms in place to sustain the goals and to attain the outcomes.
Councilmember Atlas and Breton, you have your hand up. Did you want to say something else?
Thank you. I'm trying to make as much space for others to talk, so I'm trying to wait, wait out. But I want to say that I agree with everything that Councilmember Wolf said. And I would also add that we are as much partners with, we have lots of stakeholders and that we do work in partnership with municipalities and other implementing agencies like regional park systems and all kinds of things when you start thinking about transportation and, and other groups in formal ways. And also those organizations that come before us and our partnerships of nonprofits and residents as well. And we have had a history of some of our communities not being as, leadership not being as reflective of their relations. So we need to be, I think, also mindful and respectful of all of the people who participate in our processes. We lay out these processes for reason and we say that people have input. Then we do need to honor that and be respectful of, at the same time, of all of the different types of relationships we hold. One of the things that I think is truly magical about Minnesota and that the Met Council to me is a great example of, is the value and the role between elected officials, municipalities or legislative bodies, and the value of our citizenry. And that we have had institutions like the Citizen League, the Met Council, and the way that member, council members are appointed are another great example. There are over 140 appointed citizenry bodies that help to, or member, but I think there are bodies that help to balance and make sure that the citizens have a voice in our institutions. And so I just think that it's important for us to continue to value those groups, whether they're as formal groups like the Citizens League, less formal, like a group of neighbors that come together to communicate something with us. I value deeply that Minnesota is a place where those voices matter and that they can have impact in our systems and they can see the outcomes of that impact. That is a unique thing that I think we should hold dear and, and defend and, and champion.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really great point that there is a balance. We have many stakeholder groups. And that's one of the things as we're assessing our outreach and engagement that we're really looking closely at. It's like, where are the gaps? You know, who are, who are the groups that, you know, we haven't talked to? Who are the groups that are consistently commenting on our plans? And why are they commenting on our plans at the very end? It's probably because we didn't talk to them beforehand. So I think there's, I think that's a, that's a really great point is that we do have that balance to play in managing relationships across the spectrum.
Councilmember Barbara, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. So really to follow up on Councilmember Atlas and Breton's comments. One of the things that I think may have been lacking somewhat last time was making sure that we are speaking to communities across the region. And when I talk that, about that, it is making sure that we're engaging with people from the urban centers, from suburban ring cities to suburban, to ex-urban, to rural, to ag communities, to townships, to some of our rural centers. And why that matters is because whatever policy we put in place that needs to work in a Minneapolis or St. Paul also needs to work in a Noridian America or Hamburg. And so we need to make sure that we also make sure that we're crossing all these different types of communities. So we are building something that applies across the entire region.
This is Councilmember Muse. Can I come in?
Please, please.
I think, yeah, I do agree greatly with Councilmember Wendy and Atlas's previous points. But also, I would like to point out that some cities are not brutally inclusive in their brutal representation. And they may have really folks who are out there, but they have no voice. And we have to be mindful about that to make sure that we sometimes provide some, you know, guidance and, you know, encourage cities to be, to be more inclusive.
So to tie into what Councilmember Muse and Barber said regarding that, you know, just flexibility in how we communicate depending upon the group. What is effective for one group is not effective for the other. And I also put in the comments, this goes under communication, engagement that is representative and communication that is effective for the area demographics. So, you know, a number of us are saying similar things.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's always the thing that we want to achieve is to be able to talk to them, to the communities, and to find out what's the best way to communicate with you and to get feedback. And, you know, and I, I really, I'm, I'm looking forward to having further conversations about, you know, like, like you were pointing out, some of the gaps and, and helping us identify where we should be within your districts and within your community. And I think, I think that's going to be, you know, from my perspective, and I hope you think so as well, a key role of council members in this process is going to be able to help us with that and to make introductions and to bridge those, that communication. So I'm going to move on to planning here. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Breton, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Sure, I would just add inspiration to the mix. I mean, and we would have to strike the right balance, you know, between casting a vision for communities that they may or may not be on board with. But, you know, I just think about in St. Paul, the Riverfront Corporation used to have the annual Millard Fillmore Dinner and cast a vision for, you know, what the future of our community could look like. And I think it was inspiring. And of course, not all of those visions came to reality, but I think it got folks thinking and excited about the future. And, and so I'm not saying that the, the work that we do is dry, but I do think that the more we could try to really lift it up in sort of an energetic, exciting way to get people thinking, envisioning would be, would be a good, a good thing to add to the mix.
Yeah, I like that a lot. We've recently put together Communications and Outreach Engagement Community of Practice. And that's what we're all about. We're all about finding ways to inspire the people that we're talking to, to give us feedback. And, you know, there's some piloting that's going on out there right now, like with the parks, the Parks folks and the goose chase, scavenger hunt, for instance. It's, you know, one way to think about how do we get people physically involved with trying to lay out what, what we do and how they can help us improve that. So, yeah, definitely inspiration is on the, high on the list. I'm going to move on to planning. So what are our principles around planning? You know, we have choose areas of focus. And this aligns really closely with what the, the integration team is already working on. They're, they've been listening over the past two years and compiling lists of things that, that we know that the council cares about. So that's definitely a place, again, where council members can be super helpful in providing us some vision and some focus. Outcomes and goals, I think, Councilmember Chambliss, you've brought this up multiple times. And I think that's absolutely critical is tying outcomes to goals. And how do we think long-term but make it real to people? So any thoughts on planning?
I hate being first, but I'll do it if nobody else is going to talk.
Wendy, go for it.
So we talked a lot the last time around about the need to be flexible because the pace of change just keeps going faster and faster and faster. And I never would have thought 2020 would be the crazy ride that it was. But it's a pretty good example of how things are definitely unstable in the long term. And that makes it more important that we're flexible with our planning so that we can adapt to unforeseen changes. We're, we're going to have to figure out what this whole is work from home forever? What, what's the long-term impact of the, what we've been doing with COVID and whatnot on our systems, on people's lives, people's desires for where they want to live, work, recreate? You know, I mean, everything is up in the air right now. And we're going to have to make some predictions on how that's going to go. But we're also going to have to be flexible if we're wrong to, to work with whatever does happen. And we didn't get as much flexibility as I would have liked in the, in the last one. I'm hopeful that it'll be more flexible this time. The, the other part that is still hanging over our heads is we had talked about having different processes for little cities that aren't changing at all. And, and, you know, a more robust process for places that are going to experience significant change. But we never really did turn that into a reality. And that, that still is something that we need to look at. You, there's, there should be a com-plan light process for places where nothing is going to change.
Councilmember Stern, you have your hand raised. And then Councilmember Chambliss after him.
Yes, thank you very much. I, I agree with Councilmember Wolf.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Wolf about the flexibility. And I also think we need to have uh, like standards that are ahead of time. So not reinventing the wheel and we have connectivity with our, our communities. So like, for example, like the Complete Street uh, Initiative where every community has the same connectivity in that then. So we're not reinventing the wheel from city to city. And we need to be looking at more sustainability in our planning and looking more regionally instead of as an individual city or community that we're looking at what's best for the seven county area and even larger regionally uh, that we look at sometimes. That's what I would suggest for planning.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chambliss, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just wanted to just highlight, you know, that our goals need to be measurable. And along with that, um, we need to look at the micro and the macro goals and measurements.
Got it.
Oh, we got a couple more. Uh, Councilmember Lilligrin and then Councilmember Atlas and your brother.
Yeah, thanks. I really agree with Councilmember Wolf's comments about flexibility and also sort of accessibility.
Bert, you need to put your mic down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep doing that. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I really agree with Councilmember Wolf and her uh, comments about flexibility and really all of the comments that uh, have been mentioned. And the one thing that's been kind of bouncing in uh, my mind, and this might relate to Councilmember Chambliss's upcoming goals. But so many communities, and I can speak for my community directly because I'm involved in some of these efforts. But there are these hyper-local sort of planning and visioning that's really community-based that then is uh, working its way, sort of infiltrating into the cities, the city of Minneapolis, planning process and really being reflected directly there. And I'm not involved in all the communities across the metro, but in communities where there is growth and change, I'm willing to bet that there are these sort of hyper-local uh, activities that are informing the city's policies and plans. And so, you know, in our planning, you know, our thinking long-term planning to really be leveraging the energy and community interest in some of this hyper-local planning. And that could even be, I could imagine that being sort of a measurement, right? How aligned uh, are these, are our plans with, with these really active local plans? And, and my hunch is that if we go to areas where there is energy interest being put into planning already and try to capture that energy that our plan is going to more what authentically direct what the future of the region looks like, but also really sort of prove successful. We will actually achieve some of the things in our plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Atlas and your brother.
Thanks. I love the recommendations that Councilmember Lilligrin just shared. And I think of also looking at what are some practices that are in place that other agencies and municipalities are utilizing that we can learn from? And um, not just take, you know, and build off of what they're doing, um, but also as far as the content of what they've gathered, but also the method by which they've gathered it. Um, and you know, there, one of the things that's very real and because we're all online is the fatigue of asking people over and over to engage in all kinds of processes. From your school district where your kids are to workplace engagement, to your local county, a city to, or town, to your county, everybody's asking for your engagement. So engagement fatigue is a very real thing. So the more that we can show that we are working across lines and utilizing information that our organizations and agencies, partners are collecting, I think is better. And also what are the innovations? One thing I've been asking about that kind of goes back to something another council member shared is how are we taking, or maybe it was even Sarah, I'm not sure who, somebody shared it. Are we taking advantage of the tools that everybody's building a capacity for during COVID? And I'm planning in advance now for whatever the post, I'm using air quotes, post-COVID looks like for us. And when it comes to planning, it's really hard to just shift strategy. Ask anyone working with schools right now to switch between online and offline school is tremendously challenging. And so to think now about what kind of a process we're going to go through and what type of tools we are going to need to use and ensure we're being planful around that. So I think that's an important thing to think about um, as a part of this and just being prepared for. Uh, as well as, again, I'll, I'll plug it in again, that this is a place where in planning, IEP2 really is great for picking out what type of plan appropriate for which audience is the right way to move forward um, and to be able to do it in a really transparent way. I also think that a core part of that is identifying the outcomes and goals, but also what will success look like? And then pairing it with a promise to each stakeholder for how you are going to conduct yourself as you work towards that deliverable. And that is, I think, really where power comes into that process. A lot of our state agencies and local county agencies using this tool. So we'll start to also feel familiar to citizenry and others who are participating in. And that we get benefits of return when we start using processes that look familiar. People know how to engage in it, that we don't have to do that in education as much to tell them how to engage with it, that we can piggyback, if you will, on the efforts that other agencies have started out with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And um, just uh, on this line of thought that um, we were just discussing and at the EAC, the Equity Advisory Committee, that's one of the um, approaches that we're trying to do is how to not only work more closely with community-based groups and individuals, but how to integrate their input on a, on a consistent basis. So uh, the, the way in which we can use the, the advisory committees uh, such as the EAC and others to, to be the mechanisms to integrate uh, on a daily basis, on a permanent basis, the input and outreach to, to community members. I think that would be a way to explore it. And like I said, the EAC, we're looking about how to do that now, how to get community organizations and community leaders embedded in the way we do business so we can then have more um, collaboration, but also get their input uh, more effectively. So thank you.
Thank you. Your hand up again. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you for recognizing. Um, I just, uh, I have attended some EAC meetings and um, meetings that I was, I scheduled with uh, that group. And um, they have said on multiple occasions, they want to figure out how they can um, have more influence um, and impact. The way that they're currently um, structured, I think, needs to be assessed for what's the best way to work with the staff um, and council members.
That's something for sure.
Look at that, then that's just, it, it leads to frustration, I think.
I participated in interviews um, after the first EAC group. And I know that was something that, that was very important to them as well. And having those closer connections is um, really vital. And I think um, you know, the, the EAC is definitely on um, my list in terms of this plan. Um, and engaging them very intentionally um, around these big picture questions. And um, hopefully we will be having a meeting sometime soon, I believe. Actually, Michelle mentioned something to me yesterday after their meeting. So looking forward to engaging. Yeah.
Can you read that out? Because I, it's kind of blurry to me.
I'm sorry. EAC influence and impact, working with staff and council members.
And then I also, um, the structure, infrastructure.
Oh, the structure.
How they're structured um, to effectively do that.
Thank you for clarifying.
This is Councilmember Muse. Uh, I also wonder about how can we uh, integrate our yeah, increasing cultural diversity into our planning process?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
How can we also take advantage of our increasing cultural diversity uh, when we are doing the planning process? Because I feel that we're not, you know, sometimes we are underlooking that aspect of, you know, including the cultural aspect into the planning process.
Got it. Thank you. Um, so we're looking, we've got about 35 minutes of official time left. And we've spent a lot of time on this first question, which is great because there's a lot of good things here. And I don't, it's not, that's the reason I didn't um, stop the conversation. So I, I'd like to finish this up and then before moving on to question two. Um, and I would also just encourage folks that, you know, this is just the start of the conversation. The Mentimeter is live for a few more days. I can send out an exact date when it's scheduled to close. But if we don't get to all the questions tonight, we'll get to them next time. So um, going to stewardship and finite resources. Um, kind of maximizing returns. And we've talked about outcomes and goals. And um, how do we make the most of what we have? What are the things we need in place to be able to do that?
Anybody who hasn't spoken yet, want to say anything? There's a couple of you.
Can you repeat the question or repeat that one more time, please?
Sure. How do we make the most of what we have? How do we plan for safeguarding what is scarce, maximizing the returns on our finite, our finite resources?
I, sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Go for it.
Okay, go for it.
The, the, the framing around stewardship is very value-laden and not broad. And I'm wondering, is that intentional or is that? So do you want us to work within a perspective of scarce resources as a definition for stewardship? Or are you saying stewardship, could you define that for me or share your explanation?
Um, on this one, I mean, I, I pulled these directly from comments that were put into the Mentimeter. So that's, that's really what I drew. It was a, I think, three or four different commenters talked about finite, finite resources, um, maximizing the returns and safeguarding what is safe or scarce. And so that was really based on what council members gave us. So if any of council members want to speak to their comments, that would be great.
Or if you want to speak more broadly about this topic too, you can certainly delve in.
Well, this is Councilmember Atlas and your brother. In my response to this question, I perceive stewardship as us um, filling, fulfilling our duties around all the different regulations and roles identified for the council members. Um, so for example, there are statutes and um, guidance either at the state level or in our own documents that outline what our role is. And that is our contract with the public. So first and foremost, that is the way that I view stewardship. And um, and I, I guess I feel pretty strongly um, that we are able, I, I work from a, a perspective of abundance and not scarcity. That's just my approach to work in general. And that all things at some point in time had to be built and/or changed or created. And so I don't see us as just maintaining a system. In fact, I think it was very clear for when most of us were appointed to this council that we were um, asked to talk about how we would create change and, and advance equity. That was what we were asked to pitch to the public and to the appointing committee um, which selected each of us. Everyone was asked to do that. So stewardship to me means to the documents that govern us and to the populations we represent that we are fulfilling that obligation and show public accountability and are willing to be accountable for it.
Councilmember Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just following up on what we had stated. I think that while we have plenty of resources, we also have to make choices prioritize. And I think that's part of what the council should also be doing. Especially in this time of, of people pushing back against science and facts. I think we need to be clear when we say that um, you know, we, these are our priorities, these are the projects that we believe we should be doing now as opposed to later. And the reasons for that are fact and science-based or whatever other criteria we can use. My point is that um, we, we should be out front and outspoken and defending, perhaps that's not the best word, explaining more forcefully the choices that we make and countering uh, you know, when people uh, use other, other frames of minds you had to bring to the discussion. I think we should always stand up with um, facts and also be prepared to, to support our decisions that we make whenever those are based in best practices and the best information that we have. So we shouldn't be shy about um, uh, standing up our ground because that's what also one of the points of stewardship. We have resources that are, can be or will be limited in some fashion. So when we make a choice on how to use or, or allocate those resources, we should be able to, to stand our ground and explain why we made that decision and, and how that conforms to best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on this? All right, I'm going to ask Michelle to take a screenshot of this. Do you think it's readable enough or should I go get my phone?
Nope, I got it.
Okay. And only I will be able to read my writing. I apologize. It gets messier as the evening goes on.
We'll make sure that there are notes from tonight's meeting.
Great. Get the screenshot?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to wipe this clear. And while I do that, uh, if Michelle will share the second question on the Mentimeter, that would be fantastic.
So the second question on the Mentimeter was um, moving us to what's going well and we should, what should we keep moving forward on? And I'm sharing it. There we go. Um, and some of the responses were, um, we're facing unprecedented challenges um, and have done some historic work to shift and pivot and innovate. Um, and have done some historic work to shift and pivot and innovate. This is something that obviously we'll need to continue um and, you know, continue to foster and sustain. Um, investing in transit with a priority and addressing equitable service. We have well managed wastewater systems. Our technical staff are good. Staff are committed to um the council and experts in the fields. Lots of rah rah for the wastewater system. Good work, y'all. Um, but moving to work initiative, the solar for vouchers, um, technical assistance to cities and related projects that have been fairly recent innovations. They're doing a great job being innovative, staffer forward looking. Um, I'm just moving the scroll forward. A focus on equity and inclusion and the distribution of research, resources, decision making and engagement. And that has clearly been a theme that you all have communicated tonight, that the importance of making sure we have all the right individuals in the right timeframe. And then environmental team and equity work in the parks are on the right track and leading. We should continue and expand this work to other departments. So I think some of the themes here are um great ways for us to continue this conversation. What do you see in terms of not just the innovations that we're working on now, but you'd like to see us continue to work with and expand them?
Exactly. I'm, I'm happy to take other things that you'd like to say are going well. But I'm really kind of doing. That forward look, that forward look of um what kind of innovations do we need to do to keep moving forward?
I see council member Gonzalez and council member Atlas Sing and Breton. Are your hands new or holdovers?
Holdovers, I'll take it down. Sorry.
It's okay. Council member Gonzalez, did you want to say anything else? Council member Lindstrom, you look like you're giving me the signal. Go for it.
Uh, would definitely back up the rah rah for the wastewater, uh, of course. Um, and on that score, we have two new treatment plants coming online in the next decade. Hastings and Rogers. Um, and as we do that. Keeping uh mindful towards the energy efficiency, those wastewater treatment plants. They're huge energy hogs in general. And so the more that we can make them as energy efficient. Um, right from the get go, the better off we will be.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts? It's a big, broad, open whiteboard, so I can put lots of innovation on it.
Any council members that haven't had a chance to speak up would like to participate?
I'm guessing this might be a little. Yeah, please.
I was just going to say, uh, one thing that we are already involved in, uh, but will continue to do so more in the future is around uh shared mobility, what that looks like for our transit system.
Yeah, I'm actually um working with one of our teams on a shared mobility hub guide for local governments. So we're going to have some fun with engagement on that with, with folks to see what they, they would like to have in their community. Other thoughts on innovation?
This is Linnea. Um. To me, one of the most innovative things we could do is to move the target on one of the disparities we're um mapping and monitoring. Um. And that is not just in our visualizing disparities tool, but in um those metrics that I know the management team is working really hard to get created that we keep talking about throughout the organization. So um. And, and specifically for the ethnic group populations that continuously we have made zero strides with and are hyper underrepresented in our employment statistics or vendor um relation statistics or the employment of our um contractors that we track like for large projects um that we put in place. Um. I think of some of the successes some of our municipalities have had with construction projects or firefighting and police services or our own team in, when it comes to our law enforcement. It has been really successful. And I would say that environment, I believe our environmental team has been fairly successful too. But um. That to me is an important innovation that we need to be able to crack the nut, the nut on.
Great.
Um, this is Molly.
Hi, Molly.
Hi. Um, I think that twenty twenty showed us uh how creative and innovative various departments could be in the most unexpected of ways to take the resources that we have to pivot, to find new and different ways to serve the rapidly changing needs of our stakeholders. And I don't know where all of those thoughts. It was so impressive to see the various um things that came out and the ways that a department could change and say, okay, well, we can't do this, but we can do that and how it was, how responsive it was to the greater need. So I guess I would hope that we are being very supportive of and encouraging of anyone who has these broad, different, changing, innovative, creative ideas on how we can do things differently rather than being stuck in this is what we do and this is how we do it because we always have, or this is our plan and this is the policy that we've set up. But uh, I think we're in an ever changing world and climate and will be for quite some time. So I think we need to be innovative in encouraging uh everyone connected with the council to continue to think creatively and um uh use our resources to answer the need of the day and be able to pivot quickly as we have. It's been really impressive, I think.
Thank you. I would, uh. I would add myself as an asterisk on there. I was very, I was very impressed with, I was very, worked very closely with the metro mobility and the transit link teams as they completely changed their service model. And to be able to do it in an extremely short period of time. And, and how do we apply that, that kind of thinking to our regular everyday, day to day work?
Hi, this is Charlie. I, I just want to follow up on what Molly's point and what you just said, Sarah. Is really kind of being open to the fact that we're not going back to where we were a year ago. It, it, it's a hybrid world. We've learned something that as cumbersome as this virtual kind of meetings are, there's tools that we could leverage going forward that we like, like just the accessibility that this provides. And how we think about even the services, like what you described, metro mobility, applying it to our extending our regular route system. But let's think about always, what have we learned and what's going to stay with us?
Go ahead, council member Vento.
Um, I, I just want to piggyback on what, what um Chair Zelli just said. Council members Barber and Fredson and I participated in interviewing for um TAB appointments. And one of the things that we talked about with Nick and Katie following the discussions was the idea that doing the interviews this way really made sense. We've got people that are coming from all over the region for these interviews. When they're in person, they're driving an extraordinary distance at a typically a rush hour time of day. And it just made a lot of sense. And while it's, it's not our favorite way of interacting with people, there are advantages. And um, so I like that, that thinking, Chair Zelli. And I, I think we maybe want to schedule some time in the not too distant future before we, we forget how we've changed and what we've learned. But to, to really talk consciously about what we want to continue into the future as it relates to those types of, of changes that we've experienced during COVID.
This is Molly again, and I guess sort of piggybacking on what um council member Vento said and so forth. This is not just as far, not just with our uh interviews and outreach and so forth, but also with council themselves, if we, if it is possible to consider a hybrid model of some sort. There are um occasions and life happenings that sometimes can preclude some of us making it over to St. Paul. But who want to continue to participate and could participate virtually. So really taking the best of both worlds. I think, you know, one thing that we have certainly found out in talking to each of the council members is, is we love the backroom conversation. We love the interaction. We love the touching base with one another. But sometimes it isn't possible and to have to choose one or the other, I don't think we have to do that anymore. And we've sort of proven that in twenty twenty with the success of the meetings. So um, I, if we can kind of combine the two so that we can have full participation wherever possible, I think that would be innovative and a real success.
Council member Atlas Sing and Breton.
Thanks. I just want to piggyback on this. I um had gotten a direct request from um one of our committee members um who was going to resign just because of the drive in the winter. And as they were getting, and I don't mean this in any disrespectful way, um, older that they felt less and less comfortable with the length of that drive. Are there, we also have um committee members who, and anyone at any point can be um develop a physical disability that makes um getting to and from places really difficult. So I had inquired about what we could do to um think about this um at that time um in a planful way because being online has meant that that person um gets to continue to participate. Um, and I think they're a very valuable voice. And so it does reduce a barrier for some. I think at the same time, I can't imagine, and I wonder if anyone else can, going back to an in-person meeting with someone dealing with really bad seasonal allergies or a cold and being okay sitting in a room with them coughing. And so, uh, you know, that is something where I love, um, I just want to um put an asterisk next to council member um Cummings' comments about the many benefits that we gain from this time. And um hoping that we're being really mindful. While we're dealing with COVID, for someone who has a compromised immune system or an autoimmune disorder, being in a room with someone with a cold can be also life or death for them. Or even if they have severe asthma. And our work culture has been such that you have to be in person. And there's been many a time where I've been, I, I might have told, there might even be someone in this meeting. I might have told who's our staff to go home because they were too sick to be in the meeting. I won't call that person out because I know they're in this meeting. But that's because of our work culture in our country and that has to change. But we have the tools to enable that change. I think it is critically important for us to be an agency that is um advocating for that law. I, we, I believe that would be a law change that would be required because we're acting under a emergency. Um, from how long ago, think, whatever it was that created this um law for us, it hasn't been looked at for too long. So I've got to believe someone is thinking about this at the state level. And we should be a part of um at least giving some kind of support or a letter of encouragement or, or something um to that change.
Yeah, we, I, I sit on my city's charter commission and we actually had this conversation at our last meeting. Um, and I do believe that there are efforts um around, coming from the, the League of Minnesota Cities, I believe, talking about uh this change to the open meeting law that you're talking about. So I do think there is, but certainly I, I would be, you know, in a, in a good place for us to advocate for that because I agree with all of the things that have, have been said. It's a different, it's a different world now and we're acknowledging things that perhaps haven't been acknowledged previously. So.
Sarah, one thing I meant to, to say, I forgot, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So we do have to be mindful that there are people who maybe um have a disability around sight. Um, that this is not an innovation for necessarily. And I don't know enough about that to know and also closed caption. So I just think it's something that may not have an easy answer, but we should be looking to make sure that we're building something that is accessible as possible um for the broadest audience um and take that into account.
Council member, I just want to jump in and say that that is, those conversations are also underway, that we're aware that it's really important to make sure that we're accounting for um all the range of abilities that are accessing our meetings and making sure that we're, we're doing what we can to, with some of the things you mentioned, captioning, et cetera. But also, you know, giving a sense of balance around the different aspects so that people can participate. It's very helpful. Thank you.
So we're nearing into five minutes to the end of the hour. And we got through two questions. Yes. So um, I, I don't want to, I want, I don't want to stop this conversation. So if you have other things you'd like to add on the innovation side of things, that would be terrific. But just knowing that we, uh, we, we would very much like to continue this conversation and we will work with staff to figure out the best way to do that at a future meeting. We, you know, we're at the very beginning of this process, so we've, we've got time. And, and there are important questions that, you know, we want to make sure that we, we hear from you.
And our, our plan is to capture the notes that we've got from this conversation and report them back to you, but also bring them to the planning teams to make sure that they have a sense of, of priority around some of the key pieces that you've raised tonight. I, I know as Sarah and I work with the engagement staff at the council to finalize our plans and start to really put some tangibility around those. This, this conversation has been incredibly important about what, where your priorities are and who you really feel should be, um, you know, not just engaged generally, but deeply embedded in the processes of established how we. It's a view tonight, um, the pieces that you've sent in the, the poll. And we heard from more than half of you. So I would encourage anybody who has a few minutes in the next couple of days to go um offer some additional information on the poll. It'll be open for a couple more days. And then you can always reach out to either myself or Sarah. And then you can always reach out to either myself or Sarah with, you know, general information or any questions that you'd like us to answer at a future meeting. We're hoping that there will be an opportunity either at the committee as a whole or, you know, throughout the different committees that you're all serving on to bring topics forward that are, you know, relevant to the regional plan. So we'll start to put some of those ideas together. But if you have specifics that you'd like to see or bigger picture conversations you'd like us to make sure you have at the council level, we're all ears. And we want to make sure that the teams that are working to put that material together and really start the conversations around the policies and the plan can bring that to you, and you can have what you need to be successful in terms of the regional plan. Any closing thoughts?
Councilmember Vento?
I want to say thank you to Sarah and Michelle. I think this has been an excellent process. I like the fact that it worked out the way it did tonight with the whiteboard. I think having Sarah write these on the board in addition to recording them but also gave us time to kind of marinate the thoughts and come up with additional ones. So thank you both very much. It's a lot of work, but it's very much appreciated.
Well, thank you so much. And I just want to say I enjoyed doing this very much. So like I said, I'll do it anytime. Happy to come back.
Me, too. Thank you for your participation tonight. Mr. Chair, I think we're going to turn it back to you.
Lucky me. Well, and I'm going to just echo what Councilmember Vento said. Thank you, Michelle and Sarah. I mean, this was an excellent session. But most importantly, I really want to thank all the council members. I mean, I've just been sitting back and just drinking in the depth of your comments, thinking this is why we're on this council together, is to kind of hear from each other. So thank you very much for putting into thought and continuing to engage. This is really critical work. And I understand, Michelle, that you are going to actually type out that which we had a hard time reading on the board and get that back to us. So that'll be helpful. Yeah, that'd be wonderful. Thank you, Sarah. And then I think, you know, that Mentimeter is going to still be open, but we have these additional ideas. And let's plan on scheduling either Committee of the Whole work or some other opportunities to continue this conversation. As you said, this is just the beginning. So I love that we were able to go as deep as we needed to, and we're going to not cut things off. We'll set up more times to have more sessions like this. And I guess I also say if there's any feedback that anybody has about the process just of these meetings, feel free to kind of reach out to Sarah and Michelle or myself or Mary. We're happy to kind of take that feedback, too. So with that, at six o'clock, a big day and a really great start on planning work. And I want to thank everybody for their participation. And we shall see you soon. And I think we can adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, good night.